All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of September 24th, 2015. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Larry Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom?
Here.
I'm here. Joe Kalani?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you very much. Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
Salute.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carries. Next up, approval of our September 10th, 2015 meeting minutes.
Salute.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carries. Next up, item six, call to the public. Anyone this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close call to the public. No public hearing this evening. We'll move on to item 8A, Site Plan Application Number 530-P, the revised preliminary PD plan for the Walnut Ridge Estates. So if the applicant would like to come have a seat there, we'll turn the floor over first to our planning director and ask him to introduce the project to us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I am introducing a project that has certainly been introduced to this planning commission a few times before. It is a plan development, and as the planning commission is well aware, that means it's a multi-stage review and approval process. I should say it's an amendment to a plan development, but it still has to go through that multi-stage review process. It has to go through a conceptual review, a preliminary review, and a final review, all of which have to occur before both this planning commission and our township board, which means there's a minimum of six meetings. Where this applicant is in that process is the preliminary review stage, and in this particular instance, what we're looking at is a revised preliminary plan. So the applicant originally came before the planning commission back in June with his original submittal for the preliminary PD site plan, and a lot of good discussion. The planning commission gave the applicant some feedback to use as part of making some revisions to the plans. Subsequent to that, we had a meeting with not only the applicant and his representatives, but also the Venture Church and some neighboring property owners who have some ideas for developing the properties adjacent to Walnut Ridge Estates. And it was at that July meeting that we came to some tentative agreements on how to revise this plan to facilitate not only the Walnut Ridge Estates development, but also with an eye on good future planning, provide provisions to connections to the developable properties adjacent to it, particularly the properties to the west, that front on Hacker Road. What the township was looking for was opportunities to connect with infrastructure, water, and sewer, and also with the possibility of a future road connection. We had a lot of good discussions at that meeting at Township Hall. The applicant then came back before this planning commission at the July 30th meeting with kind of a, just as a discussion item of, here's what we think we could offer to facilitate what the township's looking for as far as street and infrastructure connections to the west. The planning commission was in agreement that what the applicant was proposing at that time was a sound approach, and directed the applicant to kind of go forth and memorialize that approach on a revised site plan and in a revised amendment to the Venture Church Development Agreement. And so that's what the applicant has done, and is now back before this planning commission with a revised site plan and a revised development agreement. In general, as this planning commission is well aware, what the applicant is proposing to do is develop the undeveloped portion behind the Venture Church property. So I'll go to our nice new aerials that the township just got from Livingston County. So obviously, here's the Venture Church development as it appeared back in April, obviously before the landscaping and everything else. And what the applicant wants to do now is on this undeveloped portion, approximately 42 acres behind the church developed portion, is develop a site condominium with 64 single-family residential site condos with lot sizes and housing types pretty comparable to the Heartland Estates site condominium just adjacent to the east over here. And then when we were talking about these road and water and sewer connections, what the township is aware of is that there's vacant property right here along the east side of Hacker Road. Hacker Road basically runs along where the photograph cuts off here. And we know there to be a developer who's interested in developing this property, also with a single family. So as part of the Walnut Ridge review process, we were trying to look for opportunities to connect a future road between the two developments, as well as water and sewer infrastructure. And that was a big part of what the applicant had to work toward with this revised submittal, both on his site plan and on his revised development agreement. Generally speaking, what the determination of staff is, is that everything that we've been looking for, with the exception of some determinations that I'm looking for from the planning commission with respect to landscaping and a few other things, but in general, everything that we're looking for is encompassed on this site plan. The layout is, in the opinion of staff, is a good layout. The provisions for future street, water, sewer connections are where we would need them to be. And now we are looking for all of those commitments to those improvements to be memorialized in the pending development agreement that the applicant would need to get approved once we get to final site plan review stage. And as part of that development agreement, what staff is looking for is a phasing schedule, because the applicant is proposing to phase the residential component of this development, three phases, kind of moving from the south to the north. And so kind of the big question for staff at this point is, which party is committed to, or is obligated to provide which improvements and at what stage of the development? You know, if we're talking about a three-stage development with water and sewer and sidewalks and frontage pathways along M-59 and fitness trails in the back, whether it's Venture Church or Capital Construction, who is obligated for those improvements and when? Is it required before they stick a shovel in the ground for Phase One, or is it required after they pull the last shovel out of the ground on Phase Three? Those are questions that I hope we can at least start a good discussion on at this preliminary stage, so that the applicant can memorialize those commitments in the development agreement as part of a phasing schedule when we hopefully get to the final review and approval stage. I mentioned that there are some determinations, as there often are, to be made with respect to landscaping. There's a lot of land that's going to remain undisturbed on the north side of this property, and that's one example of where the applicant's looking for deviation from the buffering and screening requirements of our landscaping standards, as he's asking the planning commission to allow that area to remain undisturbed and in its natural vegetated state rather than, you know, removing some of what's there to put in new screening and buffering. Staff has provided actually two letters. One is a review of everything on the site plan and the development agreement other than landscaping, and then there's a supplemental letter that speaks just to landscaping. So I want to be sure that we take a look at both letters. Overall, the recommendation of staff is for this project to get forwarded to the Heartland Township Board with a recommendation for conditional approval, and those conditions have to do with some determinations that I hope the planning commission is willing and able to make tonight, and some conditions for what we would want to see when we get to the final site plan and the final amendment to the development agreement. But as I think we've been saying all along, staff feels that this is a sound plan. This is a plan that's not unlike a site condominium that was approved on the same piece of property 10 years ago that never happened because of the economic fallout. And so we think this is a plan that provides a housing component that we know is the market demands here in Heartland Township. And so long as we can nail down when these infrastructure improvements get done and by whom and at what phase, we would want to see this plan move ahead. I can certainly answer any more specific questions, or if the planning commission so chooses, I can turn it over to the applicant and their team for any additional information.
All right. Let me ask the applicant, if, in the interest of not missing anything, are you okay if we just step through the review letter, cover all the open points, and consider all those other concluded points to be not a discussion tonight? All right, so if the planning commission is okay with that, as Dave said, we have two letters, the first being the revised plan development review letter, not the landscaping letter. And I'll just hit the points, we'll walk through them, those being in the bold type, and the first one that we'll come to is on page four of 18. "Planning Commission Township Board will have to make a determination that the proposal satisfies the spirit and intent of the unified control." Dave, do we need to really discuss that?
I know we've discussed it before, and I don't think it's a point that should necessarily be glossed over. You know, the idea behind a plan development is that there is that unified control, that at least until everything gets approved, we're not, you know, splitting it off to separate developers who may or may not be as eager to honor the commitments of the developer that came before them. I would contend that in this instance, I mean, we're certainly well aware of Venture Church and what they've committed to do, and we've certainly had plenty of opportunities to work with Mr. Lansing and his group. So it would be my contention that there is a sound component of unified control with this project, but I would look for some concurrence from the planning commission.
All right. Are you satisfied that there's unified control?
Well, from your comments earlier about who's committed to what during the phasing, I would say probably not. I mean, it sounds like that you are concerned with that.
Let me say it a different way. If we can get a firm commitment in a phasing schedule of who's committed to what, and that's something that we certainly have to have by the time we get to final, and I have confidence that they will be able to provide a good phasing plan that we can all be comfortable with, then I would say that we would be looking at a unified control situation.
But we don't have that at this point.
We do not. Nor do we necessarily have it at this point. It would be something that would have to be included as part of a development agreement, and it would have to be included with any phased development agreement. And that development agreement is not a requirement until we get to final. They have offered it as part of preliminary, and I think that's a good thing, that it gives us a conversation point. But by the time we get to final, we would have to have it.
Is it a good time to discuss this, phasing?
Well, I know we're going to hit it later, but we can now.
To me, it's the biggest component worth discussing tonight, so whether we do it now as part of the unified control context or later, if it'd be better to follow the letter.
If we follow the letter, we can hit all the points, so we'll go with that. We'll go with that option. The first point to really actually discuss here this evening then is under the paragraph 5A, bottom of the page, suggesting a separate setback can be included in the development agreement, and the condominium master deed for accessory structures.
I may be...
Point to be taken.
I may want to direct a question toward Mr. Lansing. You know, presumably, your buyers are someday going to want to put in gazebos and pools and sheds and things like that. Is it your expectation that some language would be included in the future master deed bylaws, saying, here's what a shed has to look like, here's where it has to go on the property? And with the example of a shed, I mean, so there's a 40-foot setback for the house, would the expectation in your mind be that there would still need to be that 40-foot setback for something like a shed, or a pool, or a gazebo, or any of the other things that folks like to?
In my opinion, I would turn all that over once the subdivision is completely built out. I would have language in the docs that we bring to final, addressing the major items, but as far as fences and sheds, I'd like to leave those out until the homeowners association is full control.
The challenge that comes up with that, and I can see the logic, the challenge that comes up is because this is a plan development, anytime you're starting to amend master deeds, then you're begging the question, well, do you not need to amend the development agreement that that master deed evolved from? What I don't think your future homeowners association is going to want to do is when they go to amend a master deed five, 10 years from now to address fences and sheds, to have to go through the whole plan development amendment process again? So I think it's worth thinking about as part of the development agreement and the master deed that's going to come with it, rather than kind of leaving it open-ended.
We'll have an answer for that, then.
Yeah, either included, either permitted in the master deed or they're not. If they're not included, then they're not permitted.
Correct. And the reason this one is top of mind for me is we're struggling with a lot of these questions right next door in Heartland Estates. A lot of those folks are coming in, wanting to do sheds, and the way their master deed, their bylaws, and their development agreement is all drafted and linked, they're required to put their sheds effectively in the middle of their backyards, which they're not real happy with. And I don't necessarily blame them, but I can only enforce what's been, you know, approved and recorded. And so the lesson I've learned with that is let's get it nailed down at this stage.
And I think Dave is suggesting you consider something less, so they can be put back in the corner.
Okay.
Okay, next up would be on page five, in the center of the page there, if the planning commission and township board are in favor towards the houses that would be built under this design criteria, these elements should be included in the upcoming condo docs. David?
Earlier in the process, you gave us some examples of houses that you've built in other developments, and I, my opinion of what I've heard from the planning commission is they're generally favorable toward the styles and the sizes and the houses that they've seen. What we would maybe look for is, as part of the development agreement, kind of a baseline of, all houses shall be a minimum of this, you know, many square feet on the first floor, and have this percentage of brick on the front and this percent on the side, and, you know, dimensional shingles, whatever those baseline requirements are, have that be part of a development agreement. I mean, recognizing that when it comes time to build a house for folks, I mean, everybody's going to have different ideas of what color siding they're going to want, and things like that, but my thought would be there should be some sort of baseline to maintain a certain aesthetic.
Are you thinking development agreement, Dave, or are you thinking reference to the master deed and bylaws?
I think it could be reference to the master deed and bylaws. But I also think that since we're going to see all those things at final, you know, you're going to want to be thinking about those things while you're working on the development agreement.
Are you familiar with that, putting those in the master deed? I know the subdivisions I've lived in have all had them.
Yeah.
Okay, great. What Dave is saying, we're trying to make sure we get the houses that are similar to what you sold us on.
Advertised, absolutely.
Exactly. Okay, so we're up to page six right now, in the paragraph C. "Plans indicate that there will be an uncurved gravel connection. Staff believes topsoil and grass atop it would be a better option." Dave, you have that in bold type.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
We're perfectly fine with it, as long as the fire marshal's in agreement.
Okay.
And we know he's accepted that, and just recently Woods Edge, I mean, they've got an emergency access, and it's the same situation, they've got a gravel base, figured put some topsoil all over top of it, just so the grass grows and it doesn't...
Yeah, actually, that's preferable.
Yeah, his main concern is it's done right, so it holds the trucks, and number two is it's maintained all year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The, one item that isn't highlighted here that I just want to ask, that's coming up in the next paragraph though, is we talked about side yard setbacks on lots, going to the property to the west and modifying them. We didn't want to have two fronts, all those types of things, have we dealt with that? And we just want to make sure you have the flexibility that we get that covered.
Mr. Luvaneway, I may defer to you on that one. I know that when we had a discussion back in July, and there was, you know, some back and forth about if-then scenarios of providing this future connection to the west that we're going to talk a little bit more on, and I feel like one of the concerns was having to meet two front setbacks for a lots 12 and 39 that may or may not ever actually have a road there. And my recollection is we said, well, we could see a rationale for not requiring the front yard setback for that future...
12 and 39.
For 12 and 39, on both sides.
It leaves you the flexibility.
Yes, and actually, the way it works out to preserve that convertible area, obviously, if the planning commission recalls, we have sanitary sewer going down one side of it extending to the west property line, water down the other, so those kind of take up that, what would have been that front setback anyway. So it basically, the way it hashes out is we more or less are actually complying with the front setback there, just by virtue of easements.
Okay, it just wasn't addressed, and I knew there was a conversation, I want to make sure you were covered.
And I'm remembering that now, that being the reason why it was...
Okay, all right. Well, we'll move on to page seven. This relates to the State Condominium Act only allowing the convertible area for up to six years.
So I'm not a lawyer, but my reading of the State Condominium Act with respect to these convertible areas, and let's talk about what the applicant's trying to do here. I mentioned an if-then scenario. So my understanding of the if-then scenario is, if these properties adjacent to the west, which are currently vacant, if they develop with a residential development that warrants having a road connection from Walnut Ridge Estates to those developable properties, then that's why this area is left open as convertible area. If these properties don't develop within a reasonable amount of time, or if they develop with something that doesn't warrant a road connection, for example, if these properties develop with some large lot, a state residential gated community kind of a thing, that maybe there isn't a good cause for a road connection, then what Mr. Lansing wants to retain the option of is using this convertible area to build a 65th lot here, once the future of this property is known. If that road connection does come to fruition, then Mr. Lansing's second option would be to build a lot here where he's currently proposing the emergency connection to the back of the church parking lot, because then this will be his required secondary access, required by zoning ordinance, required by the fire marshal, which gives him this opportunity to build upon this lot. But my understanding of reading the condominium act is, we're calling this convertible area, we're calling this convertible area, if it's not converted within six years of the recording of the condominium, then it automatically, I believe, I understand, would automatically default to common area. So unless someone smarter than me has a better solution, I think that whatever happens, we need to know that it happens within six years, unless you, anyone on your side knows of a better solution there.
Have you had a home year look at that?
We have not. I mean, typically, our township attorney gets involved once we get to the development agreement.
I just think that there may be some exceptions to that rule.
Okay.
On hand, I would have to look into condo act.
Okay.
But my thinking is, is that right now, I mean, this seems to be a win-win for everybody to keep it this way.
I would agree. I mean, this is what we want, I just, when I, my reading and the township assessors reading of the condo act says that if we don't have this figured out within six years, the option of converting this convertible area goes away. And if there's a clause to that, then I think we're all ears. But we would need to figure out what that is.
Well, we need to figure that out by final.
Okay.
Don't we?
I would think so. And it's at that stage that our township attorney would be vetting the development agreement, the master deed, the bylaws. I would think Mr. Lansing would maybe want his attorney to look into that one as well.
So we're all aware of it now, just by the timing, get back here for final, have that wrapped up in the document, if it needs to be. Page seven, traffic, Dave's got highlighted, planning department's not aware of whether the applicant has been in coordination with MDOT on a traffic study, traffic analysis, or a warrant analysis, or a traffic signal.
Thus far, we have not. We will contact them, but it's not going to meet the warrants.
Right.
And I don't disagree with that. Speculation.
You would disagree with it?
I don't disagree with it.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, what happened?
Right. As we've talked about all the way through this process, what is much more likely to happen is, based on the road improvements that are going to happen on the Hacker Road south of M-59, that's where your next traffic signal is going to go.
Right.
Not at the entrance into this development.
Right. So we're looking for a contact and for them to tell you it's not warranted. Okay, we're up at page eight already. We're at the, about two-thirds of the way down. "The residential developer of Walnut Ridge Estates includes in the proposed amendment to the Venture Church Development Agreement that he will share no obligation in any improvements to Hacker Road." And I believe that was part of the discussion in agreeing to do the connection that you were doing.
I highlighted it just because I do feel it's a key point. I don't know if this is an instance where I'm necessarily looking for the planning commission to concur. This would be language that the applicant is proposing to state in the development agreement, and I think in all the discussions we've had, when we're talking about equity and who's responsible for what, I think the applicant, Mr. Lansing in this case, makes a pretty fair case that he's providing the water, he's providing the sewer, he's providing the land for the future road connection. And in so doing, he's done his part, and if the developer next door wants to develop along Hacker Road, his part would be potentially paving Hacker up to his entrance.
And that's my recollection. Everybody agree?
Agree. Absolutely.
Okay, so item E, applicant's engineer should confirm the design to meet the Livingston County Road Commission's design standards for a public road. We're good there?
They do, and of course, your engineering consultant has reviewed initially, and during the detailed engineering review, they will be reviewing it for the standards.
Okay, all righty. We're on page nine now, about halfway down. "Not apparent from the development agreement, which party, the church or the residential developer, is responsible for construction of the sidewalk along the east side of the private road, which traverses across the church's property. Staff feels this should be constructed along with the extension of the private road and as far south as its proposed connection to the point of the M-59 frontage." Dave?
So the portion I'm talking about is, the Venture Church has constructed the driveway where I'm moving my cursor right here to that point. That is currently the easternmost entrance to the Venture Church. What the residential developer would then propose to do is continue that road on as a private road back into his development. One of the requirements when we were working with the Venture Church was that, when this day comes, of a road being extended back into this residential development, that there would be a sidewalk along that road, and then the next part of this conversation that we'll get to is that sidewalk would connect to a frontage pathway along the M-59 frontage. But the question at the moment is, as this road gets extended back, how does the sidewalk component, it's part of the whole phasing schedule question of, does the sidewalk, at least through this common area, get included as part of this road extension that's proposed as part of Phase One? Or is the sidewalk, is the sidewalk portion something that happens toward the finish line as opposed to toward the starting line?
I can answer that. Our intent is it is part of Phase One, and it will be constructed by the residential developer.
Okay. So did that answer that question for you, Dave?
Would it extend, would it extend as far, on the residential developer's obligation, would it extend all the way down to where it is meant to connect to that frontage pathway? Or would it only be, you know, until wherever the future dividing line is between Venture Church property and Walnut Ridge Estates property, does the sidewalk only get built there? Somewhere like right there perhaps, and the Venture Church is responsible for the rest all the way down to the frontage?
No.
Okay.
No, all residential developer.
Okay.
So that will take care of most of that concern. And then you got that 10-foot path shown along the church's frontage. Do you bring that up for reference, just as a connection point, or?
Well, I think we talk about it later too, but it's worth bringing it up now perhaps, is this, my understanding is this frontage pathway along the church's M-59 frontage remains the church's obligation? And I know Mr. Fraygo's here this evening, and maybe this is a question for him, but at what stage does this obligation get fulfilled in Mr. Lansing's development phasing schedule?
Are you asking me?
Unless Mr. Luvaneway knows the answer, whoever knows the answer, I'm asking that person.
I would think that we'd have to do Phase Two sometime in the next period.
Okay. I may look into...
Looking to have that in writing?
It would be part of this phasing schedule that I keep referencing. If that seems like later in the process than what the planning commission may want, or that's worth discussing now. I mean, the intent was, once the residential development came onboard, then that's when that frontage pathway was done. What we didn't get into the specifics of is, does that mean it gets done at the beginning of the residential development, at the end of the residential development, they're proposing in the middle? Obviously, we want to see it get done, and we want to see it get done at appropriate time. And I guess I'd be looking to see if the planning commission feels between Phase One and Phase Two is the appropriate time to get that frontage pathway.
What works for you guys?
It's really dependent on, you know, when and if M-59 is improved, in my opinion, because it's a path to nowhere, basically. I mean, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it in every development, but it doesn't connect anywhere. Just back to the, you know, the... Just back to the, you know, the new homes there, so I think that's appro, that's fine with me, somewhere between phase one and phase two. But it's my opinion.
Any other thoughts?
Sure.
Why is it ten foot, I can't get them, but I go down M-59, all I see is five foot long, and then on any of the properties that are...
I don't think, I don't think the north side is five. I think the south side is five, the north side is eight or 10.
That's correct.
All in front of the shopping center with Kroger, everything in front of Ramco and Big Boy.
Yeah, that's the one commercial.
Oh, well, it's just designed that the north side is 10, it's considered more of a bike path, and the south side is more of a sidewalk, and that's at five foot. And I think the north side is asphalt and the south side is black, or, um, concrete.
Right.
Yeah. Just something that somebody years before us decided what was going to be, and it started, and we've just continued on with it.
So that will be a pathway to nowhere.
Well, hopefully someday it will.
I'll say, we, we certainly had the pathway to nowhere discussion back when the Venture Church was getting proposed.
Right.
And I'd like to think we settled it then, and it was memorialized in the Venture Church's development agreement.
So it'll be, it'll be per the Venture Church agreement, which is the 10-foot asphalt between phase one and two, you just need to get it into the document, however you should word that. Dave, you also have a paragraph there referencing a connection to Heartland Estates, about a third of the way down.
Correct. So let me go back to the, the aerial. And I, this may have come up at that June 25th meeting, that was a meeting that I, due to illness, missed, and I'm, I can't recall now, looking through the minutes, this is just...
Was that the public hearing?
Uh, it was.
Because it did come up.
Okay. So it, forgive me if I'm reinventing the wheel. This, this whole area where I'm moving my cursor around, this is all, uh, common open space for Heartland Estates. There is a sidewalk connection, albeit in this picture, maybe, that I, in my recollection of looking at the Heartland Estates site plan, was there was meant to be a sidewalk connection through this area. I don't know that it was necessarily meant to extend all the way to the neighboring property. My only thought was, as, as they're building a sidewalk along the private road into Walnut Ridge Estates, is there any, uh, any thought to at least providing a stub sidewalk to Walnut Ridge Estates' east property line, such that if Heartland Estates ever so chose, there could be a pathway connection between the two neighborhoods?
Well, at that meeting, the public hearing, the residents along there were, were here, and had, when the topic came up, had requested that it not. And while I believe in the interconnectivity and all, this township approved a gated community. And I wonder if all that plays into that connection, I don't know. Maybe you leave the easement, draw an easement line in, don't build it. So if it ever wanted to happen between the subdivisions, that's my opinion.
And like I said, if this is something that's already been figured out, I'm not necessarily looking to reinvent the wheel.
I don't know if it's to figure it out or not, but I do recall the residents requesting no connection.
I agree. That, that was going to be my comment, that was my recollection, and, and I guess I had a question as to, without knowing your Heartland Estates might contiguous sidewalk, where would you stub it at?
Well, they are, they, they, they have their own ball fields, they have their own recreational facilities there, and I don't know if they're just not looking to share, but they did pay for them.
Oh, I agree, no, I agree wholeheartedly, but as I was saying, my point being, if we were asking the applicant to stuff a sidewalk into Heartland Estates, where would he put it? What location that would be agreeable if it were later determined that Heartland Estates would want to connect to it? I, I mean, we got quite a length of sidewalk there, and so I think it's, so I agree with you. It was my understanding that, at the time, there was not going to be any shared access.
Tom, any comments?
I think like all of us, select a walkable community. Should we plan forward in the future, have an idea where it may go, in case people think different at some other time?
Okay.
I just think the idea of maybe drawing an easement, establishing an easement, having it one heard, just, just my thought.
Yeah, I remember the whole conversation as well, and I guess, you know, that's one resident, you know, I mean, our bigger mission is to try to be interconnected. Things may change, so I guess if we can keep the door open, if that's the thing to do, I prefer that.
Joe?
I would agree. I think you can, two condo associations decide if they want to make that connection, but we can provide that on the point, so that easements are already in place.
Would you be all right with that? Probably nothing you'll ever deal with, it'll be the homeowners after you're long gone. You'd find, just select a location and...
So a future sidewalk easement somewhere in this neighborhood south of unit one?
Yeah, I mean, that's their, some of their open space, their undeveloped open space. So if the neighborhood's ever wanted to do something, at least it's there. Okay, we are on page 11. Doesn't look like we have anything on 11. We're all the way down to two-thirds of the way through page 12. If the planning commission, township board are favorable towards houses and amenities that would be built under the design criteria, we already discussed this, should be included in the forthcoming condominium docs, we talked about master deed. So we've already covered that point. Just noting that it's there. Looks like we're fine with all of it. We're on page 13 now, under landscaping, there's a separate landscaping review letter that we'll cover here in a minute. I assume it covers the points that are being discussed here, is that correct, Dave?
Yes. In that paragraph, I tried to summarize the bigger...
Yeah, but we'll get through that letter here real quick. So if we want to flip over to page 14, proposed amendment to the development agreement should be specific with respect to timing of the water main extensions. Here's another phasing. Is that what this is?
It is, and in this particular instance, the water main connection appears to be within phase one, but the sewer main connection, it looks like it straddles the phasing line between phase one and phase two. And I know we're going to next go down to the sewer connection, but again, it's the question of, when do these extensions get constructed in the proposed phasing of this development?
The, the intent is both in phase one.
Okay. Okay. So that'll answer both of those items on page 14, just making sure we've got them covered.
And that's something that would get memorialized in a phasing schedule as part of a development agreement. Thank you.
Okay. We're over onto page 15 right now.
So recycling, something we've already talked about, just maybe a little more detail, but it was worth coming back to because it, it certainly has bearing on the, the road connection, the water connection, the sewer connection. This provision within the State Condominium Act about the six-year expiration on the opportunity to convert convertible area.
Right.
So we, we've all got...
According to the condo act, that's their convertible area, something has to be done within...
Something does have to be done.
Within the six years of the initial filing of the master deed. So I thought perhaps if you could amend the master deed later, you know, because there's a certain point in time when things, you could, you know, modify it.
Well, and, you know, speaking on behalf of the applicant here too, they, they may have a point in less than six years that they need to like wrap this thing up.
Right.
And there's going to become a point in time where they're not going to sit around and wait forever for the guy next door.
Yep.
And I think we all talked about that. I mean, they were, I'll use the word cooperative enough to include this, but we aren't going to wait forever for Mr. Rotundo and/or future landowner to make their decision, so...
So maybe six years is about the right...
Maybe at six years is fine. And if he hasn't done something in six years, then he's out of luck. And, you know, I believe in interconnecting of communities, but I'm not going to hold him ransom to their schedule.
Sure.
And require a, you know, a PD amendment or anything, I don't think that's fair. So you got six years. Figure it out, get it done, or you can continue on your project and wrap it up the way you choose. Does that sound fair to you? Thought so. So we are at the bottom of 15 phasing, no, no phasing schedule provided, we've talked about it. Are there any other points here, I guess on page 16, you're, you're highlighting them for us? Are you satisfied with the answer?
I tried to bullet what I came up with as the, what is there, maybe eight issues that I think need to be clearly addressed in a phasing schedule. Most, not all of them, we've, we've, we've covered. I think the one that maybe we missed in the sidewalk discussion is, Mr. Lansing, if I'm not mistaken, the intent would be to construct the sidewalk in front of each buildable unit as that unit gets built, which is a fairly counter-practice. The, the concern with that is if, if things slow down, or if things grind to a halt, as we all know they did a few years ago, do we then wind up with a development with a lot of gaps in the sidewalk connection with no foreseeable, you know, timeline for when those gaps get built, or when those sidewalk gaps get filled? And if so, then does the township have any recourse to, you know, complete the sidewalk connections? And I know some communities require the developer to put forth a performance guarantee for just that scenario, where the local municipality could go in and finish the sidewalks if the individual units aren't going to get built anytime soon. It's, it's asking for the developer to, to tie up more of, of his capital, but that is one way to ensure that the sidewalks do eventually get built. The other option is to build them now and recognize that they're probably going to get crunched when the, you know, equipment comes in to build the house on each one of those units.
Yeah, that's a waste of money.
Yep. And I don't know, given your experience, if there's a, another option for some assurances that within a reasonable amount of time, those sidewalks do get built, as opposed to having gaps here and there that linger for longer than anyone would like?
I'd like to think that if the economy does what it's supposed to do, we're going to build the houses, the sidewalks are going to be built, and if the economy fails, we're not going to build the houses, and then people are going to be worried about the sidewalk.
Do you have any thoughts on, is there a, a threshold within each phase of, you have to build, I don't know what it is, 80% of the houses in this phase before you're ready to start moving dirt on the next phase?
There's definitely casual analysis, but I haven't really given that too much thought yet, because I need to figure out exactly what this is going to cost. We've got some arbitrary numbers, but our goal is to obviously do as fast as, as we can, but that all depends on the economy and the citizens.
So I think what we need to see in a development agreement is the developer saying that, you know, with respect to the frontage sidewalks, those get built as the lots get built, but then it would be up to the planning commission and the township board, is that acceptable? Or would there be a concern that you're now leaving yourself open for gaps in the sidewalk network if things ever do, if the economy does have a downturn that we all unfortunately know is possible?
Yeah. As long as the economy keeps going, any selling houses, we're not going to have issues if the economy goes to hell.
We've got more issues than...
There are more issues than a sidewalk.
I'm not sure assurance bond is really going, I mean, to finish sidewalks, I'm not sure...
That are going to get ripped up when he builds houses, when the economy turns back around. It's just life, to me. I, I don't know how you're going to deal with that.
I, I recognize it's a, it's a tough decision, I'm not necessarily advocating for the performance guarantee. I will say that other communities have in the past required that, and it may be one of those things that was easier to require when money was a little bit cheaper. But we also, I think, have all been in neighborhoods where, you know, there's still 20, 30 buildable lots and no sidewalks in front of them, and we have to ask ourselves, is that something we would want to be concerned with?
Well, you've got to think of, a condominium is a, it's, it's a planned area, just like a subdivision, or you would have an inflated subdivision. And, I mean, um, performance bond is necessary to make sure that the people who do buy in there, you know, they're buying into that system, they're buying into that with the understanding they're going to have sidewalks throughout their, their development. I'm less concerned about someone who rips them up when they have, go to construct than someone walking away and not putting in the amenities that everyone else had expected to be in there when they, when they bought it to a condominium. I will point that out, I mean, a good example is the site condos behind Kroger, you know, that was a Crosswinds development. You know, two-thirds into that development, they, Crosswinds went bankrupt. And if, but for the fact that we had security on there, none of those sidewalks and other coatings at the top, you know, the second coating on the, on the road, none of that stuff probably would have gotten done. That was the purpose of the security. So I can just point that out.
Oh, no, that's a good point, and I think we require it on the road, do we not?
We do.
Yeah, but I think that when you buy into a condominium development, you're, you're buying into the idea that, you're buying into a system, you, you're being sold something that I'm going to be able to walk this community. Just pointing that out.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, I, I agree, Joe, and I would say that maybe at a minimum, we can say before the phasing takes place from one phase to the next, that the previous phase is complete. So even if there are some holdouts and lot developments in phase one, before they move on to phase two, that all that sidewalk needs to be complete.
Something like that, yeah. I think that would be fair.
Can you come up with something that will work for you, or any suggestions?
I think that having something like that is a good idea, but, you know, if sales are doing good, and I, and I develop phase two, I'm not going to put $30,000 of the sidewalks in so that I can sell a lot in phase two, to rip off that $30,000 within six months when I build the flats in phase one. You should have been there.
So you could jump phase two before you finish one, is what you're saying?
Well, if I had the money, I'd develop the whole thing at once and sell it all at one time.
Right.
But if somebody comes in and absolutely needs lot 30,000, and that's the lot that they're, they're going to, you know, and we're, we're getting down to the end, I'd like to be able to sell it, if they don't, even though there might be a couple lots open in phase one.
So could there, could there be something, I mean, you threw out the number six months, and I know it was probably an arbitrary number, but could there be something like, within six months of the start of phase two, the sidewalks need to be completed within phase one? Or 12 months, or?
Yeah, we can put a timetable like that on there, you know, but again, having a performance bond for that specific thing would be a little tricky to, to get. I don't have a problem with that, if you put it into the agreement.
So what are we, what are you suggesting? 12 months?
I, I would maybe, yeah, some sort of timetable, and I don't necessarily know what the magic number of months is. I'll, I'll let Mr. Lansing and his team chew on that maybe a little bit, but as part of this phasing schedule that we keep talking about, I think there could be an opportunity to say, you know, within so many months of the start of phase two, all these things within phase one need to be completed.
Okay. All right. So the only other thing in this phasing schedule that I don't think we've really talked about is the church's fitness trail circuit. Is there any timetable on that, or what are your thoughts?
Three hundred and twenty.
Same thing. So Dave, where is that going? Is that going in this PD agreement? Or where is this going?
That would be, that would need to be part of this amendment to the PD agreement, because right now the Venture Church's PD agreement says we shall provide a fitness trail, but it hasn't happened yet, and we recognize that part of the reason it hasn't happened is, you know, it, it was kind of contingent on what happened to this property back here. Now that we have a sense of what's happening with this property back here, how it's going to lay out, how's it, how it's going to develop, I think now's the time for the church to commit to a timetable, to, you know, fulfill that obligation.
Okay. Are you satisfied with all the points on the scheduling now? Is there anything else we needed to discuss tonight?
The water main loop to Giovanni Court.
Okay.
The Giovanni Court is a cul-de-sac in the northwest side of Heartland Estates. And part of the Walnut Ridge Estates development would be to loop an eight-inch water main to create that loop with Giovanni Court. And having water main loops, we just had a conversation today about all the benefits of looping public water main within residential developments, creating redundancy and benefiting, to the benefit of water reliability and fire safety. So, within that phasing schedule, I would want to know, when does that particular loop get constructed?
With our revised phasing, which we now anticipate three construction phases instead of two, and if the planning commission recalls, we had originally proposed phase one as being all of the east side, which that has now switched to the south side. So, right now, we expect that infrastructure to be phase three.
Okay. So you're just going to put it in the document accordingly? Great, thank you. Anything else that you need covered on phasing, Dave? Anything we need to talk about?
Not on phasing. I will remind that we do have some determinations we make as far as landscaping.
Yeah, we're going to hit the landscape letter.
Okay.
Well, first thing we're going to do is the top of page 17. Are there any questions or comments on our consultant's reviews between the DPW department, the engineer, and the fire marshal, fire department? Any comments, anybody? They all seem to be fine with what's going on here. So what we need to do is skip the end of this letter because that includes the motion. And we're going to jump to the landscape review letter, which probably is the next letter in your packet, also dated September 16th. And let's just look for the bold type. Is that what we shall do again?
Yes.
So we will be on page, at the bottom it says packet page 27.
It is worth noting, too, that Mr. Le Vanway, Boston Engineering, submitted a response letter that addresses some of these issues. The key issues being the street trees and the quantity and the variation in the street trees. They actually proposed more street trees on the preliminary submittal. And the direction of the planning commission was to provide a more naturalized look. And then there's also some issues of screening along the perimeter and particularly adjacent to Heartland Estates along the, you know, what is Mr. Lansing's east property line? What is Heartland Estates' west property line? And then also, the applicant is requesting some deviations from the requirement that they provide landscape screening along their perimeter where adjacent to lower-density residential. So that would include most of the west property line, all of the north property line. What they're proposing to do is keep this natural and maintain the existing natural vegetation under the rationale that what's there now is better screening than what they could, you know, rip out in order to plant new. So they would be looking for the planning commission to concur with that proposed deviation.
Okay, so I guess we're looking at that packet page 27 and we're talking about the treatment of the existing plant material. And you're referring to all of the buffering around the outside of the development at that point, Dave?
Well, certainly along the north and the west. They are proposing some enhancements along the east side here. And we did have some questions about that.
Any comments on the, let's just handle the north and the west, leaving all that land untouched. Is that providing adequate screening? Are we satisfied that that is in the best interest of all parties around?
I believe so. There's a lot of natural vegetation, especially on that west. It goes into some lowland there. And I think it would be foolish to tear that all up so I could turn around and put shrubs and trees, et cetera, back in. So I think their request is very acceptable.
Sue?
No, I agree completely.
Everybody?
Yeah, I'd like to see some guarantees in there, though, some protective easements or something like that along those property lines. So if, when the neighboring properties get developed, you know, would you still have that buffering there?
And I think that's part of this agreement, isn't it?
Yeah.
They are showing conservation easement. I believe it's meant, at least the way it's drafted, it's meant to encompass the east, the tree line along the east property line. I think what I'm hearing is it should be expanded to encompass a lot more of the land along the north and the west.
Is that an easy enough thing to do?
Yes.
Okay. So we probably need to discuss the vegetation on the east side now, particularly where it comes up on Giovanni Court. That's what you're looking to discuss, Dave?
Yes, and one of the things I'm looking for some thoughts on is, you know, they provided some evergreen trees, some of which appear to fall within the building envelopes of the, some of these units, 52 through 56. I wonder if those are intended to kind of fill in some gaps along that existing tree line, if those should be left outside of the building envelopes of those units. Because obviously, the builder on each of those units is probably going to want to be able to take advantage of as much of that building envelope as they can, as opposed to encumbering it with some trees.
Our thought in that case is that there's really a good vegetative buffer there now. And, you know, we don't want, we want this to be a dimensional buffer. We don't want to try to stick pine trees right under deciduous trees, doesn't work well. So we brought them back into the lots a bit. And these are deep lots. You know, typically, the houses nowadays are getting built toward the front setbacks. These are really at the very backs of the lots. So are they in the building envelope? Yes, just barely. But we don't think that they would be in a location that would be restrictive to the house. And again, we wanted to be sure we got out from under that quite thick as far as width vegetative buffer that's already there on the property line.
Any thoughts on, would they get planted, on those particular lots, would they get planted as those lots develop? Or would they get planted along with the, you know, the landscaping for some of the common areas?
Well, we certainly believe they would stand the best chance of survival if they're built with the houses. You know, when there's nothing to screen until the houses are there anyway. And do you screen houses? To houses, that's, I guess that's a debate for another night. But, you know, that's our thought is, it makes sense to build them with the, or to implant them with the houses just because you have that pride of ownership. Those people in those houses are going to take care of those trees. Otherwise, they're sitting out in an empty field and nobody's going to assure their survival.
So then my job by the time we get to phase three is to make sure that I remember that lots 52 through 56, each of us a few trees.
Well, I have a concern with that. And I don't have to be the guy to go out and count them. But I think, I'm wondering about these trees personally. To wait and put them in when the house is built is a tracking nightmare that won't happen. It happened in the development, the last development I was in. Every house was getting two street trees. They were going in when the house was built. You know what happened? They never got put in. And when the few people that caught it in the bylaws and the master deed and everything found it, the township never did anything about it. 64 lots in, it's kind of hard to go back. So they never happened. So, but, putting some trees out in the middle of the field isn't likely to survive either. We can take a look, and the classic would be the screening on Fox Brothers along Bergen Road. You know, they had the big wild area and all the screening went in. And weeds are four feet high and all of the evergreens are dead four feet off the ground. So...
Maybe they can be a phasing issue as well, right? When the third phase happens, then if you've got enough, you know, potential to develop the third phase, I think that's probably a good time to put the trees in.
Stand a much better chance of surviving, I think.
They'll be there for less than a season, most likely.
Would that work for you?
That would, you know, I'm a big proponent of doing it later because like Tom said, something, we planted, we're not one of those people that don't do that. We do either. I mean, we've got it in Powell right now where, you know, they're out watering that every night. I know that if we plant them, that's not going to happen. So, we planted them before people were there and have them now. So then, you know, who pays for those after a year? You know, if they die after the warranty's up, that's on their responsibility, the homeowners association gets it. So, I'm a big advocate of putting in, once somebody's built in the house or the house is completed, so that there's irrigation, some sort of watering place. I understand both sides.
Okay. What's everybody else's thought?
I'm okay with including it in phase three. As long as it's in, verbiage is there.
Is that all right? Does that work for you? That's okay. Okay, we're on packet page 28, I guess. I guess actually, no, there isn't, there isn't a whole lot to discuss, so we're on 29. There's just a reference to the conservation easement. Is that just an oversight and get that corrected next time around? Okay, then down at the bottom, a question?
We want to include the entire site, right?
Yeah, you've agreed to the north and west.
North and west, correct.
Right.
So is the screening along lots 52 and 56 sufficient? Dave is looking for a comment.
Well, we just talked about it a little bit, you know, when do we plant those trees? But then the question is, is that the right amount? Is that the right location? The, somewhere in there, the applicant mentioned, you know, screening a house from a house. I appreciate the logic. There is a requirement in our zoning orders that says, "A higher-density development shall be screened from a lower-density development." And if you crunch the numbers on Walnut Ridge versus Heartland Estates, Walnut Ridge is a higher density. So we do at least have to recognize that there is a screening and buffering requirement. That's part of what the applicant is trying to fulfill by, you know, adding some spruce trees along that west property line, where there presumably are some gaps along the existing tree line that's going to get preserved.
Well, I'm satisfied with it. Are you?
Were there some side talks with the residents in those areas? I know that that was an option when he came in last time that those talks happened. I know that some people were concerned with those and the other cul-de-sac that is adjacent. Did you talk to the homeowners directly there, or no? No, no. I'm talking about, yeah, at the public hearing, there were some concerns with those adjacent lots.
I thought they were more concerned about the vegetation easement protection, creating a lot of additional trees.
Well, it was like a general concern.
Yeah, we have, we have...
And that conservation easement, how far down does that go again?
I don't know that the plan necessarily shows a boundary of it. That the arrow points that far. Again, with those being deep lots, I don't think there'd be a problem with the conservation easement basically being the rear setback.
I'm comfortable with that.
You're comfortable? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the planning commission on the landscaping? Sue, did you have any comments to offer?
I think we, were we going to also talk about the street tree?
Yes.
And I think that's on page 28.
Yep, that's what I'm trying to track down. Thank you. So there are requirements for street trees within a private road in a development such as this. The applicant is looking to deviate from that and rather than provide so many trees per linear foot, rather take an approach of two trees per frontage, regardless of necessarily how wide that particular lot is. I think the thought is that creates a little bit more consistency. And if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the thought was, if you follow the linear foot arithmetic, you would effectively not be able to see any of these houses, there'd be so many street trees out front. The planning commission would have to make a determination whether that's a fair deviation. And since, by doing so, they've taken a lot of trees away, is there any potential for a trade-off? Could any of those trees be, is there a better spot elsewhere for those street trees that they're asking to be taken away?
So, you know, I can see what you're trying to do. You've got this naturalist kind of looking, you know, kind of more like nature groupings and then not. And I guess going down a street, I was looking at kind of the spacing. I can see 30 feet to me is looking a little bit close when you can, some of the trees you've got there, you've got it at 30 feet on center. But then there's some gaps that I think are too far apart, such as they can, they get over 100 feet. And then all of a sudden, it just really, you don't have anything to contain the street and it really gets a bit bleak and barren. To me, that's the purpose of the street trees. So I think maybe we can find some middle ground, okay? I mean, personally, I'm used to communities that are 30, 40 feet on center, you know, so I don't know if you can look at the average of getting up to the 40 feet or something. But I do feel the gaps are getting way too large, especially like in the cases of where we're leaving that lot open for the connection back to the church where emergency. I mean, that gap is 190 feet, you know, trees. So it's just starting to get too far apart where it's going to really is start to get a little bit stark and bleak. So maybe there's a way that we can find that common ground. 30 feet does look really tight when you start to put it together, I get it. But I think you've gone too far the other way.
Is there a possibility of so many per lot for a lot that's up to so wide? And then if it's more than, I don't know what the magic number is, 90-foot? Or if it's wider than 100 feet, then maybe then it goes up to three trees for that, the lots that are within that tier?
I don't know that, Dave, because the lots come in every size and shape.
Yep.
So it's hard to forecast, okay, you know? I kind of think it's more about spacing maybe should be no greater than 50 feet, but you can still, you know, have some flexibility. So you're not just all jammed together to fit a full lot.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and I understand. And visually, you know, it's obvious on the plans that there are some larger gaps.
Right.
And we'll fill those in.
Yeah. Just my comments.
Any other questions on landscaping? Okay, so let's go back to the first letter, and I should have probably asked at that point. Are there any other questions at all now for this development? If you have any questions or comments? We are at the preliminary phase of the PD process, which will ultimately require a motion to move this to the board.
If the planning commission so chooses to move this to the board, it would have the potential to be in front of the township board at their October 6 meeting. And then the township board would have the opportunity to consider approval preliminary. And then the applicant would hopefully be back in front of all of us soon enough with final. If the planning commission so chooses.
And if you so choose, you will find that in the first letter on page 17 of 18 at the bottom. Carrying over to 18. Up here at the top, 17.
Move to, forward the preliminary plan, development site plan to the township board for the recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions. One, landscape plan, the final plan, development site plan, be revised to reflective directions that we've discussed tonight. The development agreement amendment include phasing schedule that clearly establishes the timing for all site improvements, including but not limited to the water main extension, the sewer main extension, internal roads, internal sidewalks, the M-59 pathway along the Venture Church frontage, and the church fitness trail. Three, the condominium master deed established the natural features conservative easement along the east, north, and west property line and to be shown on the site plan. Four, the development agreement included elevation renderings to establish a baseline for homes to be constructed. for homes to be constructed within the residential portion of the plan development. Five, the condominium documentation clearly address standards for accessory structures, for examples, decks, pools, sheds, and items of that nature. And I think that should be it.
A second to that. We have a motion to forward the preliminary plan development of this site plan, application number 530 to the Township Board from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Voight. Is there any further discussion? Follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follows nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks, guys. All right, next up is item B. This is site plan, application number 535-C for conceptual for the Newberry Place PD Concept Plan. What we'll do is we'll, we'll start out with our Planning Director just giving us a brief introduction to the project, and then we'll turn the floor over to you and allow you to present anything you would like to, and then we'll open it up for Planning Commission comments. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Campbell, our Planning Director.
Thanks again. So, this particular project, like similar to the project we just saw a minute ago, is a plan development. The project we just saw a minute ago was an amendment to an existing plan development. This project is a proposed new plan development, but I use the word new sort of loosely because this is very similar to a plan development that was proposed on the subject properties about 10 years ago. And today's applicant is looking to revise a lot of the, revive a lot of the components from that plan that the Planning Commission and the Township Board saw in 2005, 2006. They've even kept the same name. So, this is a plan development to be known as Newberry Place. It's a plan development proposed to encompass two parcels, a 30-acre parcel on the north side of M-59 at Fenton Road, and then a approximately 78-acre parcel on the south side of M-59 adjacent to Pleasant Valley Road. Pleasant Valley Road and Fenton Road are the same road, but it's called Pleasant Valley on the south side of the highway, Fenton Road on the north side of the highway. As we well-known, have already discussed, a plan development is a process of a conceptual plan, a preliminary plan, and a final plan. And where this particular applicant is, is at the conceptual plan stage in front of this Planning Commission. Conceptual plan is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to give the applicant as much feedback and direction and advice as they can possibly come up with, so that the applicant has a really good basis for how to proceed once they get into the preliminary review, which involves a lot more engineering and working with the architect and doing a traffic impact study, which is a significant component to this development. No formal action is taken by either the Planning Commission or the Township Board at the conceptual plan stage, but like I said, it really is a good opportunity to, to put the applicant, steer them in the right direction. The applicant is Mayberry Homes out of Lansing. They have acquired this property from Heartland Township or are in the, in a purchase contract to acquire this property from Heartland Township. The reason the Township owned both these properties was because of the development that was proposed here 10 years ago and the sewer contract that was signed by the developer of that time and the Township in order to provide sewer service for that development that unfortunately did not happen because of the collapse in the economy that we've already touched on a little bit. So, the Township reacquired these properties at the state's tax foreclosure auction, held onto them for a couple of years in order to protect our investment in our sewer system. And last year, maybe Mayberry Homes entered into a purchase agreement with the Township to develop these properties. What Mayberry Homes hopes to do, and in all likelihood partnering with some other groups, is develop a combination of apartments, detached condominiums, and commercial components on the 30 acres on the north side, along with, on the south side, more of the same apartments and single-family lots of varying sizes, tighter lots up toward the north half of the north property and a little bit wider lots as they move toward the south end of the south property. The grand total of the number of dwelling units that's being proposed is 367, I believe, and that's a combination, like I said, of apartments, detached condominiums, and single-family site condominium units. There is also a commercial component, but it's relatively undefined at this point. In both the instances of the north property and the south property, the commercial component is along the M-59 frontage, but as you can see, it's relatively undefined. It's basically empty rectangles that say here, where, here's where the commercial will be, here's where we project a senior living facility, here's where we project a gas station. And then on the south side property, again, some empty rectangles of some future commercial along the M-59 frontage. Obviously, the applicant is here and can address their vision for these properties and who they are and what they do and perhaps some other projects that they've had success on in the state of Michigan. The, if it's the desire of the Planning Commission, they could give the applicant an opportunity to talk this project through, and I can certainly answer any questions either part of that conversation or now. But again, at the risk of repeating myself, now's the opportunity for the Planning Commission and when this gets to the Township Board to give the applicant some good direction on how they would proceed with a project such as this. Oh, it's, I'll close by saying, these subject properties are part of what we define as a special planning area within our comprehensive plan and our very up-to-date future land use map that the Township Board just adopted earlier this month. Special planning area does envision a plan development with a mix of uses, such as residential, office, commercial, and having that residential be varying in its types and its densities. So, a lot of those components that are envisioned for the special planning area are encompassed within this concept plan. So, I think we as a Township are excited to see something happen on these properties. Obviously, we put a big sewer pipe in the ground to service these properties many years ago, and now this is an opportunity to finally see the development that comes with, with that infrastructure improvement. So, with that, I'll turn it back to my Planning Commission Chair and see if he has any questions for me. Otherwise, the applicant's here to answer questions on their behalf.
Well, welcome. We'll have you in a minute, introduce yourself. At conceptual, as Dave said, you're introducing the project to us. There's, we're not going to go through any formal letter or anything, so what I'd like to do is just turn the floor over to you and tell us what you want to do or anything you want to share with us. And then afterwards, I think we'll open it up to the Planning Commission to ask questions, comments, give you thoughts. So, if you'd like to introduce yourself and go.
I'm Bob Schroeder. I own Mayberry Homes with my wife Karen, who is off in Arizona at a national home builders meeting. And when we bought the property, we thought it was a great location and a great opportunity. We looked at the Township's market study to see kind of somewhat what could be done there and what the overall feel of the Township was. And we conducted our own market study that narrowed that down and focused onto the property from there. And starting out, we had the Newberry plan, but I think I'm a frustrated designer. My initial thought was, well, we'll just start with a blank sheet of paper and start over. But when we got the market study and as I looked at the plan and a lot of the thinking that was there, we felt that the bones of that project were pretty well in line with what we were trying to accomplish. So, we have worked off some, the Newberry plan that I think went through preliminary approval. I'm not really sure.
I think so.
Still on the commission that may have been there at that time, but, so, we've started developing that. We've since been contacted by two parties that want to purchase some commercial land along there, and one of them doing a care facility, has motivated us to speed us, speed up a little bit to try to meet their timetable, which is fine. So, we're here with some concepts we think are cool, which are upscale apartments. We can look at the, we have some detached fourplex, that's a motor court fourplex. So, there are four detached units where I think the original plan called for row houses, townhouses that were, that were alley-loaded. So, from the neighbors, you did have a road that went around the boundary, and then garages on two and three-story buildings, which is sort of, creates a wall. What we've changed is creating a motor court product that has four units. And at some point, we'll look at that, but the, okay. You see the back units, they're turned 45. So, across the back property line, what you have is a sawtooth feel. It's a lot softer feel. I love the detached versus attached. I tend to favor anytime I can a detached product. We think that's a very cool addition, and that's something that's taking off nationally as opposed to rowhouse. On the apartments, we're looking at doing it something similar to what was there. This is a plan from an architect company who is, sort of uses the term big house, is how he's branded it. But if you look at the elevations, each elevation looks like it could be a large house, looks like it could be a large house as opposed to, it looks like it could be a large house as opposed to an apartment building. So, every unit has its own garage with access into their unit. They also, they have front doors, and we think it's a really nice-looking product and nationally kind of the hottest thing that's going in apartments. It's an upscale apartment. It's, you know, we're seeing a shift somewhat to, and I've always built homes and residential for sale, but we're seeing a shift where some people may permanently be renting. And so, this to us is an upscale, cool product that there's not a lot of out currently. So, we're excited about that, excited about the fourplex. Then our original purpose for coming in was to do single-family houses. We sort of sorted through all this to get back to on the south side what we do the most of. And so, that's where the market study called for three different lot types to give us three price ranges. There we go. So, we have a large lot, 80-foot, 80-foot plus, and then what's the next?
65.
65, and then 55. So, we have three different product types. And then right now, these two areas we're leaving as, sort of to be determined. We are working with a possible buy-up here to do a commercial project. So, I guess that's the start of it. We've laid this out, kind of coming off, if you look at the old plan, you'll see a lot of things that are familiar between the two plans. And that's about it. So, if you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Scott Thomas, Mayberry Homes. One of the things, if you look through our portfolio, you'll see that, you know, we do have a lot of communities in and around Michigan and a very high character in terms of craftsman-type feeling and community-type feeling. So, we're planning to bring that sort of architecture, if you will, to this development. One of the things, kind of to Bob's point, that I would like to note is if you look at the, look at the original Newberry Place plan in comparison to the current plan, it is less dense. We've done that on purpose. We want to try and loosen it up a little bit and, you know, bring more of a residential feel to the community versus the townhomes and very high density, especially on the north side that was there before. It is our intent to take advantage of the sewer system that's there on both sides of the road. And in addition to that, we're proposing a private water system as well for the site.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? But you're going to get plenty of time to talk here in a minute, I think. You'll be given a lot of answers.
Well, I would add that we really like, our core is to design and develop communities. I mean, that's, that's what we love to do. We won two national awards. We were number one and number two in the nation in customer service surveys from the largest company that does customer surveys. So, we build communities, and I think our history is we've done a pretty good job of that. And we get excited about it. We have a passion for it. Scott's background is as an architect, and I'm just a frustrated architect. So, we like doing something cool. We like doing things that satisfy the current market. We tend to think a little outside of the box, and so we try to do something and have fun with it.
We've got our consultants here as well, Gary Markstrom with Tetra Tech Engineering, Deb Cooper, and Caitlin Jackson with Beckett and Rader. Beckett and Rader was involved in this project before, and that's why we brought them back into the, to the mix, since they're very familiar with what was done.
Okay, great. I guess I'll open it up to the Planning Commission. Any feedback, questions, comments, anything you have? We'll just say go.
The apartment buildings that you referenced, how many units? How, how much are they separated? What are you, what are you looking at there? I'm kind of curious.
On the north side, I believe we have 100 units. They're 10-unit buildings.
They're 10-unit buildings?
Yes.
There's seven, seven on the top, three on the, seven on the top floor, three on the ground floor, is that?
That's correct. And we may play with that. We may shift the buildings a little bit. We've looked at a 12-unit building, but 100 units on the south side or on the north side, and then the south side is going to flex depending on how much of the frontage along 59 becomes commercial versus apartments. Ideally, we'd like to end up with close to 200 units between the north and south side.
And looking at some of your, your pictures here of the homes, are you, are you planning and using any, you know, your materials? Is there a lot of brick used or siding? Can you kind of explain a little bit more in looking at those, the product? I was just curious. Is that sort of representative of what the product's going to look like? Or do you have other ideas or?
Yeah, I think that's representative of what we would look at doing, yes.
So, they predominantly vinyl then, or hardy board? What's the typical skin on the exterior?
It depends on the price range. In the moderate price range, it would be vinyl. We quite often use an upscale vinyl that has a wider choice of colors. And from 10 feet away, you can't tell if it's cedar or vinyl.
Mm-hmm, darker colors.
So, but we do the detailing of the porches, brackets. We also believe in four-sided architecture. To me, I am, two things I do not like. I do not like garages that stick out in front of the houses, and I hate it. So, at Mayberry Homes, I think we have one plan out of 40 plans that the garage sticks out six foot further than the front porch. A lot of our product has the large front porches, brackets, detail, and we follow that detail on all four sides. I also dislike, say, garages that stick out, especially restrictions that say, do a bunch of brick or stone on the front and do it the front, and then the side, to me, it looks like a Hollywood set. And, you know, to me, you live in the back, you live on the sides, and you see a house in three dimensions. So, anything we do tries to follow it. If I do stone, it follows around the corners to a true ending point. But, so, we don't do a lot of brick and stone, haven't. Even in our upper-end 500 to 700,000, we use waincoats of stone and stone columns, but I'm not heavy on just brick structures.
In the apartment complexes, are they similar to the elevations you showed here? That, although they have a little more brick or stone?
Yes, yep. They have some masonry mass to them.
Yeah, we would have some accents that would pick up some of those types of materials. As you can see, there's some.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what.
Yeah.
I like masonry when it serves an architectural purpose. Sometimes what I see is, well, do 150 square foot. So, we typically, based on 150 square foot, and it makes no sense. It just looks like something. So, when we do masonry, we want to have it look like it's a mass, like it, like architecturally it's the correct thing to do.
You mentioned 40-something developments. Are there any, if we were looking for an excuse to go on a road trip, is there any, at least on the residential side, a development that you've done or finishing up on that are representative of what you envision getting built on, you know, here in Heartland?
Sure, yes. College Fields, we're doing two developments, the Village of College Fields and Parkside at College Fields. A development we just finished this past year would be Okemos Preserve, all in the same area, within half a mile.
Is that like off Jolly or where, where's that? Is that like off Jolly or where, where's that off?
Sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know where Ockhamus High School is?
Yeah.
North of there, between there and Jolly Road.
Let's continue.
We do field trips around here.
Oh.
That's why, yes.
We can send you.
No, I work, I work out there too, so I just stopped by.
Okay.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, if you're in, we could send you a list of communities that you could go and take a look at.
Do you, did you work with the drain commissioner out there on any type of drainage for the project or was it more with the community? Like comprehensive drainage for the site?
Well, the drain commissioner in Ingham County is Pat Lindeman, which you probably know.
I know Pat.
And Pat cites us for Ockhamus Preserve, one of the projects I told you about, as an example of a developer working with the drain commission to do proper storm drainage in that we developed detaining and.
More, more natural.
Worth going into, but we, the undeveloped land, we put the water in proportion to the same drainage patterns that it was before. We also dug a, basically a ditch out to re-feed a wetland that development had dried up. So it was in a park and they put this pathway and deck out so people could look at the wetland. And then they cut off the water supply to the wetland so you could walk out and see this dried wetland. We resupplied it with water as part of our whole water system. So it was a very creative, oh, the other thing we did is, working with the drain commission, you asked, we said the silt fence thing doesn't really work, sort of silly. That's what we all do. And so I asked Pat if we could be more creative. So he said there's different products, flock logs and silt fences and a couple of different things that we could try and he would support. So we didn't have to get permits on each lot. We did a global project-wide soil erosion control system. And he went out and tested it. This is why he's went around the country talking about us on this development. They went out and tested the water color based on the overflow from a half a dozen different projects. And I don't do it, but they grade it based on the, the impurities of the wa, impurities and the color of the water. And when the guy came back, he said, well, what were they? And he said it was clear water. So we were turning clear water off of our project. All the other developments were in various ratings of contaminated or sediment-laden water.
You knew the answer?
It's a loaded question.
That's what the lawyers do. He is one.
Is your plan, or what is your plan for, for instance, with single-family homes? Are you focused at just a particular market or are they graduating from first-time home buyers up to, you know, larger, more eloquent homes in the back or do you have a plan?
Yes, well, and the south side, the three gradients of lots are to develop three price points. So more like entry first move up and then second move up. And then around the outer and southern perimeter would be reasonably expensive, not upper end, but you know, upper end sort of price.
Did all of the photographs that were provided in the packet, it looks as if all of the homes are two-story. Do you have ranches as well?
Yeah, we have a lot of ranches.
Okay.
And we have story and a half, first floor masters and ranches and two stories. So I think it's just coincidence that we have photographs of only two stories.
So do you work off of a concept of a model home and then sell? Do you build to, are they spec homes or are they built a sole job? How do you typically do a subdivision like this or a development like this?
When, when we do a development, we would either have plans or design plans that fit each lot. So if we had the 55-foot lots, we'll have a ranch or two, a story and a half or two and a couple of two stories that will fit that. And then we have options, both elevations and structural options and of course all sorts of interior options that they can pick. And in the sales process, we have a program that's really cool. It starts with, they pull up that plan and as they select an option, it draws it in on the plan or switches the elevation. So we can sit down with a client and customize their house. And if that isn't enough, I mean, we'll completely custom a plan too.
And Larry, to answer part of your question, we do work out of models. So we typically will go into a community and build some models. Sometimes they're for sale, sometimes they're not. We do speculative homes as well as build, you know, sold, sold homes. So it just depends on what's going on within the community, the pace, those types of things. And we've been pretty successful with speculative homes as well as for sale.
Okay.
So here in Howell on M59 west of here, do you have a development there west of Oak Grove, Michigan?
Yes. Town Commons, just off 59.
You didn't start that development though, did you?
No. We've followed celebration in several communities like that. And so I found this community when it was started and I followed it over a period of, I don't know, 10 years. And then it became available, what, a couple, three years ago? And we tied it up and bought the lots and optioned the remaining land.
So are any of the model homes there similar to what you're proposing here?
Could be similar look.
So if I understood you correctly, you select groupings of homes for potential for the lots. In other words, if I picked lot X and wanted to put a ranch on it and that wasn't part of your site plan, I might have to look for a different lot if that's the home I wanted. And I ask that question relative to your development out in Howell. Looking at that map, if I was looking for a ranch home, you had ranches located in particular parcels.
When we, Howell, we inherited, and it was sort of an odd lot size and an odd configuration, which we've tried to work with as best we could. I would not have created the situation. So we're adapting to it rather than it being what we would normally do. So typically what we do, I like to say that any lot fits this array of plans.
Okay.
Ranches, story and a half, they all fit. So I try not to say this lot can only have a two-story, this lot has ranch or that type of thing. Let people pick their lot and then pick from the array of plans.
We actually, in Town Commons, we have a couple of houses under construction right now that are ranches.
Yes. I went through the, that development last week, yeah.
Yeah. Ranches are actually pretty popular right now. So we definitely see that as a part of the portfolio for this community.
I was curious about on the north side coming in, straight ahead, you've kind of got that Central Park scheme going and then also on the south. But on the north side, you've got some parking associated with that park too. I don't know if you have a program for the different parks, if there's a reason why there's parking in that one and not on the south or what, what that was about.
I don't know that there's a specific reason and we may add parking the other. One would be that people may choose to drive there and use the park. It also could be used, some parking on that could be used as an overflow parking for the apartments.
Sure.
As well as some street parking, plus the parking we have at the apartments.
Okay.
Probably not.
I think as we move into preliminary, that you'll see more development of that and, and we'll end up with some, on the south side, we'll probably end up with some parking as well. Right. Yeah, what Deb was saying, we're, we've been talking about a possible amenity within this common space on the north side, which would drive some of the parking as well. We know we've got to do a pump house and some different things as a part of our private well system. So we may incorporate that into some feature for the, for the community.
I assume part of your analysis will be making sure that you have enough guest parking for all those apartment units.
Yeah.
And just, just having that much parking space available.
Yes.
My first impression here, especially on the north parcel, is that it's probably a little bit too dense. That, that parcel neighbors, the adjacent properties are a little bit less dense, a lot less dense than that. And it looks to me like you're going to have a hard time buffering those densities. And I would look to tone down the density on the north parcel. I think you'd have more opportunity for that density on the south parcel. If you look at the neighboring properties especially. So I would be, you know, concerned about that. I know the property owners around the, on the adjacent properties on the north side are definitely going to be concerned with that. However, generally I like the mixed use. I think that's what we had all intended there originally, so that's a good idea. Have you, have you had any other interest in the commercial properties or do you have any idea what you're looking to develop there? Restaurants or kind of autonomous kind of structures? Or is it something, I guess what I'm getting at is I'd like to see some kind of contiguous development there where there's shared parking, shared walls on, on buildings and things like that. Something more lower impact than, than the typical, each, each, each use has its own building and its own parking and this and that. I mean, it just seems like it's not a very appropriate use of space. So if you could do some of that combined kind of space, that's what I would prefer. And then with the development this side especially, we're going to be looking for some community benefits. So better come prepared with some, some, some uses that are not just for this development, but a general community uses. So I guess that's.
Did I see at the informal, because I'm not seeing it here, did you have a comparison of the density of the proposed, the original Newberry versus your proposed Newberry? I was just looking to flip real quick to see how the density was different.
I believe, and Scott, I don't know if you have the numbers, but we're less dense, including on the north side than we were. And we've also gotten rid of a two and three-story wall that would go along the neighbors. So we've improved it considerably. We're also up against, and I think Heartland wants us to try to use the REUs.
Right.
So we're actually pushing to try to use the REUs. The market study for the south side of the property was to do that all as single-family. So I've pushed a little bit already add from that market study report to add some multiple on that side of the road. They were looking at the north side being considerably more dense than what we did.
That was a preliminary plan, so.
Pardon?
That was a preliminary plan. And we had the same, I had the same concerns back then. I was.
No, I was talking about our market study though.
Okay.
And the preliminary plan that we're coming off from. So, but I'm saying the market study wanted us to put more of the density on the north side and use the whole south side as single-family. So I've already shifted from their recommendation, quite a bit of density to the south.
Yeah, we, we reduced the residential count by more than 100 units from that original plan.
And, and I'll add that I think the quad, the, the quad units, the quad driveway units around the perimeter is a great way to sort of work into some of the density with those neighboring parcels. I was on the planning commission at the time that the original Newberry went through and, and I do recall the people along Fenton Road coming and being most concerned about it. But I do think I remember if I pulled the plan out, that I think that was that two and three-story rowhouse, townhome that we had there. So you have done.
Yes.
You have done some, some work in that particular area and keeping the density in the middle of that parcel helps a lot.
Especially with the way those are laid out in, in terms of the site plans with them turned at 45 degrees, it's, it's really going to diminish the, you know.
The impact.
Look, if you will.
The other is if you go with the apartments in the concept, the big house plan or the mansion plan or whatever that's called, I think that helps the look and the scale of the development because I think I'm familiar with seeing those and I don't think they look as chunky and boxy as a typical 10 or 12-unit apartment building does because you've got a lot of roof lines, a lot of things happening to them. So I think that will help the overall look of the development and the density. But I appreciate that it's more to the center and you've worked in it, worked it in keeping the outside less dense.
I'd like to add what Jeff started with the commercial portion of it. I think we'd all like to see, we feel that we'd like it to be a walkable community. So we would like to see the commercial section up front, especially on the south side probably, to have some commercial entities there that would help support that area, that development. So people could walk up there and do, buy some things, take care of, you know, service needs and walk back home. So that's, I think what we were looking for in the commercial portion of it.
Initially, the commercial was, there was a lot more commercial on the south side in the original plan than there is right now. But, you know, I'm, I'm certain with all the vacant commercial properties we have here that we don't need to see too much of it out on the east. So probably more of that neighborhood service type commercial work or a larger, you know, depending on what you're looking for, connections to the neighborhood so they can walk there if they choose to, you know, that type of thing.
And we, in the agreement, we retained architectural approval of what's done. Our concern and as well as I'm sure the townships, my concern is I want it to not be any negative to the neighborhood, that it be soft, that the architecture look nice, it not be huge big box type buildings. And we're working with the group that, that would like to buy the south corner towards that and actually working through an architect that I've used to come up with something that's really cool and is a positive to the neighborhood. And we definitely want to tie it in as far as walkable access so that people can go down and get a cup of coffee at Starbucks or the things that we do there, so.
I think there is a balance though. If you look at our, the marketing analysis that we've had, they recommend a lot less commercial than what we're actually showing. And I think the last thing all of us would want would be, you know, storefront after storefront after storefront of empty for sale signs. So I think there's got to be, got to be a little bit of a balance there.
Yes, I, well, I would, yeah, I think you're right. I, I don't want to see too much there. That was probably my point. We have enough down here. You know, I support the concept of service gas station up that way. I think those types of conveniences for those people are a good thing because that type of service keeps them from having to drive here just for that and create more congestion if they can get that dry cleaning and that cup of coffee and that newspaper and fill their car up with gas and whatever else might come in that type of commercial. We don't need a Home Depot on that corner. There would be my point. That, that would not be the place for it in my mind.
Is it, is it fair to say that whatever the commercial component is, we would all want to see it be very well integrated with the residential component?
Right.
In terms of its design and its layout and its traffic flows and its internal connections? Whatever the scale of the commercial development is, it, it would need to be a part of, you know, what we see as, you know, an overall well-integrated mixed-use development.
Right. And that would be our intention as well. So we're happy to work with the township with input on that.
What are you planning as far as phasing for this project generally and like how far, how long do you think it would take you to fulfill the whole development?
That's a question I stopped answering when we hit 2007 or 2008. Stop making those kind of predictions. But the north side will be the first phase. What we would like to do is get the north side all set up and get the apartments going and get the fourplex units happening. The care facility is anxious to move forward, so that would happen. The other commercial will probably be left for now. At the same time, we want to bring the water to the south side and get the sewer up and get the boulevards in for the group that is looking at the corner. And again, the reason I started into this and I'm working my way to it is to get back to the single-family houses. So if we can, we would get a phase, we would start the single-family housing within the next year to 18 months in conjunction with doing the work on the north side. next year to 18 months in conjunction with doing the work on the north side. And then phasing, I would hope that we're doing 30, what is the market study analysis?
Terms of pace per year?
Yeah.
I can't remember off the top of my head.
But, but we like to see 30 units a year, a good takedown rate.
I think it was, I believe it was 36.
Ten-year project.
Probably.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you, I'm familiar with some of their developments. I grew up in the Lansing area, so I'm familiar with the area that they develop in. And if you're in the area or if you send the list for other communities you've been in, it's, it's, it's different in a good way. There, there are a lot of benefits to the type of architecture you do. I think it appeals to a very modern society. I think it's very much something, I, I would venture to guess that you get a lot of families, a lot of kids, and then I'm not familiar as much with the larger homes, but that may go at the back unless that is something that I've been through a development, just I'm not identified that way. But, but it is very much a community because they keep hold of it. They're not selling the lots off and everything goes together.
We, kind of the inspiration when we started Mayberry Homes to me was Celebration Florida, and may I be familiar with that. But that, that's the feel and look of a lot of our product. And we've worked with nationally recognized architects, Barry Burkus, who was considered one of the top 100 architects, died several years ago. Don Evans out of Florida, who's won dozens of awards and done communities all over the country. And Mike Woodley from California and Denver, who's done communities. So we try to get input of what's fresh and what's happening in floor plans and look and feel.
Yeah, I think the houses look that way from the outside. Does anybody have any other questions?
Hi, Matt.
Yep.
The, I don't want your engineer to get bored, so.
Oh, good.
You know, we had a lot of conversations when we were talking about Mayberry, you know, acquiring these properties of whether this property could be potentially served by municipal water and, and bringing the township's water line, extending it down M-59 to service these properties. And obviously you, you did your cost benefit analysis and it looks like you settled on the community well. Does that have any bearing as far as the, the design, the layout, having to accommodate things like pump houses? And would we be looking at a water tower on this? Do we know that yet?
We're, we're not leaning that direction right now. We know that we've got to do an elevated storage, not elevated, but above-ground storage system, but we would not be leaning towards a water tower at this point. But to answer your question, we took all of those items into consideration during our cost analysis and it was still, you know, much less expensive for us to do a private water system than it was to extend on the city water.
And one of the, it was touched on in our, our letters, you know, the township has, you know, acquired the maintenance responsibilities for some private systems and, you know, maybe learned some lessons from that. And so what I know our township engineer, our DBW department is looking for is if this is going to be a community well system, to add a design to the township specs in anticipation of what they think might be the inevitability of eventually the township taking over the maintenance of a, of a private system. And so I know that's touched on in, in the letter.
Yeah. That would be our intent.
Your first question about the pump houses, yes, we'll have a building that'll have wells for pumps and/or pumps in it, but probably a hydromantic tank at the beginning of the development. And as we get further into the development, out of there to the phase, sort of tap back with some sort of above-grounder storage. So that would come in as a later phase, but I believe our initial phase would be with the wells and if you type on a community well, type on well, municipal well design standards and buildings that will be your option guidelines.
So when you mentioned above-ground water storage as you get toward the south side.
If, if system will have storage in, in, my, my first thought on that is that we were keeping with the well system because we have to then, if we put it into a, above, a hang-up repump, I need to have a place to put those pumps to pressurize the system from the above-grade storage. Putting them all on the north side works well because then I only need one building. I can, I can do that in one building versus putting another building on the south side with, with the, and then having some type of bead line like the south side that is the, that is just the well water conduit. So putting it all on the north side works, will, works great for the, for the development. It allows us to phase in and pull some.
And above ground, above-ground storage, is that a water tower?
Essentially a tank that's, above-ground storage is a tank that's probably about 32 feet tall in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand gallons lost in that area.
Okay.
We can do a couple of things with that and we're just in the beginning stages of some of those. Maybe, it may be something that is, that is sheltered into a house structure. Our, our did one in the city of Frank, 200,000 gallon tank and pump house that's in a ranch house.
Like occupied ranch house?
No.
No.
But it sits on the ground.
It looks like, it, it looks like a house on the outside. It has yellow windows on the outside, I don't know why, but, but the windows are blacked out on, on the inside, so you can't see into it. We're saying as a porch and a door to access it, garage door or garage, and then garage is a pump. The rest of the house is done, it's a 3200 square foot ranch house that has a tank in it. And that's part of the concept that we're bringing and discussing with Mayor at this point is a possibility for something, except for a normal round tank you see in, in other communities that are, you know, large round tanks or concrete or steel tanks or, you know, that may not be as attractive for this type of community as, as something that we could, that we could screen into a, into a structure. These guys build houses, so I, I think I can talk them into building a house around a tank, so.
And it's, the only reason I keep dwelling on the water tower idea is, is well before my time, I know there was a, a lot of discussion about the water tower that we do have in Heartland and what color shall it be and what sort of logo shall we put on it? And we, so just what, water towers are, are, have historically been an issue in the township. So I just wanted to kind of see where you're at on that early process.
And Dave, back in those days of Newberry and the Heartland Glen development, when we were meeting with those people, there was discussion of another water tower going in the township down at that end. And it was a ground tank. It sat on the surface, so it went that 30, 40 feet in the air. They're less noticeable. I'd, I'd like to see the house around it as, I'm going to bet you will, when you try and put that thing in that development because there's a lot of density and a lot, and a lot of character with the developments you build. Seeing a big round exposed tank might not fit your personal desires. But there was a discussion of a water tower down there. They need to balance water pressures and all or something.
If you talk to the municipal system, they'd like to have a similar grade line as you have on this side of this, you know, M-59, US clear. But that can be done as part of the design of the pumping system, even with the ground storage. So if it able, able to match your system, it'll be created as somewhat future, should the, should the land between here and, and the water system mile and a half away develop and extend access.
It must be expensive to put a pipe in the ground because it's hard to imagine what he just described is better or cheaper than a mile and a half a pipe. But I believe it.
But we, we wish.
Seems like a lot of money.
We wished it were.
Yes.
Because I would rather have city water. If there was a way we could do it and we've studied and learned and become comfortable with the private water system. I had, it took a while for me to get there. But there's, it's probably three, four times more expensive.
Three, three times.
More expensive to bring that pipe than it is to do this whole system. So for us to fund that, it's, it's just too much.
But you have two components of that pipe. You have the pipe, the constant pipe, and then you have your share, our share of the infrastructure that's powered to the ground and part of your connection, the system that that you have in place here. Those combined, you start pushing the price way up.
Oh, all the tap fees and everything?
So, so, you know, if there's, you know, some, have to give there because private water system becomes more important at that point where they are located at the mile and a half.
So do you treat this water or are people going to have softeners or?
This water will be quarantined before it goes out and probably use a iron stabilization in it. So, but the individual homes or, or units would have to have some type of a water softening system. Or they, you know, lot people are on wells that don't have water softening systems, it's just a matter of having something like a iron filtration in here.
Yeah, well, I would imagine a lot of these lots end up irrigated. And I know we have a lot of iron in the water around here, so unless you want orange driveways and
Right.
The like, something's got to give with your treatment on that type of water.
I have one push comment, and I know this is a little premature, but on the north parcel, it, it will be very interesting when we do traffic studies, et cetera. But I am at the moment a little concerned with the one resident where the driveway comes in off of Fenton Road. I see that being a little busy. And I think somewhat concerning to that resident there, all of a sudden, he's now got another highway on his south side. Just, just a comment, like I said, I know it's, I know it's early and everything, but.
Well, it is, and you'll need to pay attention to some buffering. You know, you heard it in the previous applicant where you take these higher densities, this would certainly be the application of, for the few homes around Fenton Road that, you know, there'll need to be some screening provided. And along that road there was probably one of the areas that would need to be dealt with.
Speaking of track, traffic, I know I've gotten some emails from your traffic consultant, and I feel like I've been copied on some emails back forth with them and with MDOT. As far as you guys know, you've got a scope of a traffic study that MDOT has blessed and I guess my question is, do you know where, where you are with the traffic impact study?
They're still working through it. I think they have a scope in terms of what MDOT wants.
What they want counted, which intersections, which turnarounds.
Yes, I've gotten some information in terms of what that looks like and we're, we're working through that right now, getting ready to actually kick off the study itself.
And I think for the benefit of the planning commission, I think MDOT, in addition to a standard traffic impact study, is also looking for a crash analysis. Unfortunately, we're all aware that there was a fatal crash at 59 and Fenton this spring. And, you know, given that, in addition to looking at the, the normal traffic volumes and things like that, MDOT is going to want to see, you know, what, what the crash history is at that intersection and whether or not this developer would be, would be obligated to in some way or another enhance that intersection.
There is in the study right now, there is mention of analysis around a traffic incident.
Probably be a good location for us.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Yes.
When you're looking into recognizable benefits, I know the fire department's been looking for an area for a substation in that area. And maybe you might want to talk to the fire marshal and maybe feasible for you to set up some type of a future site for them? Just something to think about.
Anything else? Anybody have more?
Oh, good. I should have, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this with our last applicant too. I know our, our, Heartland School's transportation director always likes to get in on these as early as he can just to see what opportunities there may be for bus stops and bus pull-offs and things like that because obviously there's going to be a lot of folks living there and probably a lot of young families and.
Heck, they'll probably be at school over there soon.
Could be too. So he always wants to, he's always asking me that, hey, let me talk to these guys early so I can see where we could put a bus stop, so I can put you in touch with him.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone?
You are, you are where the Pleasant Valley further down is all unpaid.
Yeah, it's been mentioned. I'm not sure, I haven't driven down it.
Yeah, well, a couple of us on the planning commission.
You live along Pleasant Valley?
No, it's the only stretch of Pleasant Valley and Fenton Road. You can go all the way to Flint on paved, on paved road. You can go all the way from Commerce South to Ann Arbor here on paved road. There's only one section there that's unpaid.
How much, how long is the section?
About a mile and a half.
Late turns also.
Yeah.
It's probably why it's not paid.
Well, for a long time, they, they didn't want to pave it because there was a beautiful
Natural beauty road.
View shed there. And then ITC came in with their towers and cut everything down.
If I'm not mistaken, there's some challenges not only with, with paving it, but aligning it as part of.
Right.
Because there's a pretty big curve there and so there's some alignment issues as well.
But if we had enough interest on that, because, quite honestly, I do think it's a road commission issue. I think the road commission has been ignoring it for, that road gets tremendous, it's like, because you can get to 96, there's an exit. So it's another, another north side way other than 23 that people use to get where they want to go.
Your, your predecessor in developing this property obligated themselves to?
Paving the entire thing. No, I'm just kidding.
To contribute to.
You should track them down.
Right. And where are they now?
To contributing to, to a paving project for every dwelling unit that got constructed.
Yeah, I think they had something in there. You'll pull it out. Anyways, anything else for them today?
No, I think it's great. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Welcome to Heartland.
Yeah. We look forward to seeing you here again soon.
Well, the concept plan will in all likelihood be on the township board's agenda for October 6th, so mark your calendars.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Well, there's no public, so I guess we will skip the call to the public. And we will move to our planners report, Dave.
Some update on some pending developments. So the Muggen Bops gas station did resubmit their revised site plan. This is the, the gas station on the northeast corner of Clark and M-59. We are in the process of reviewing those plans that came in earlier this week. Along with just not quite right next door, but down the street at our new KFC, the franchise owner is now looking to add another phase to that development, as I've mentioned, which is an office building, a relatively small office building just for his own business purposes because he does own, I think, five KFC franchises. So this would be his, his business office behind the KFC restaurant. So those plans are under review as well. We're looking for an October planning commission meeting for those. It's still to be determined whether that would be the early or the late planning commission meeting. It's worth mentioning that the October 8th is our first planning commission meeting in that month. That's also the same date as the Michigan Association of Planning Conference, which I was going to attend. So I'm looking at my schedule and, and the applicant's schedule and keep both the 8th and the 22nd on your calendar until we figure out how those are going to fall. You should each have in front of you a copy of the update to the comprehensive plan. So that's hopefully the, the finish line for a project that we all worked pretty hard on over the last year or so. I just mentioned the planning conference, October 7th to the 9th in Detroit. And as I mentioned every year at this time, we do have money in our budget for training for our planning commission members. And if anyone's interested in attending all or a portion of the planning conference this year, let me know. And quick update, a couple of construction plans that came in for the approved Speedway and the approved Turnin' Two softball complex. So now our engineers and fire marshal and everyone else will be looking at the detailed construction plans. I know with Speedway, their hope is to get going on all the off-site improvements still this season. When I say off-site, I mean paving the, the old mobile site for additional parking for Fountain Square, moving the shared driveway, expanding the detention basin. And then their hope would be, you know, as soon as the weather allows in the spring, that's when they would get going on taking down the old gas station and, and starting on the new one. And I know Turnin' Two, their hope is to be playing softball out there next, you know, late spring, early summer, so they want to get going here soon too. So as I've been saying the last few months, keep your pencil sharp.
All right, thanks. Committee reports. Anybody comments, anything? Now, we could have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, support.
Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close any motion carries. Thanks and good night.